Good evening. I would like to welcome you to the proceedings of the Grand Rapids Public Schools Board of Education. It is Monday, September 3rd. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being and justice for all.
Reverend Matthias, can we please take the roll?
Yes. Reverend Matthias is present. Mr. Ross?
Present.
Ms. Shalke?
Here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Baker? Okay. Ms. Davis? Dr. Flores?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
President Grant?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Reverend Matthias? Yes. Mr. Ross is excused. Ms. Shalke?
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry.
Mr. Ross is here.
Ms. Williams?
Here.
Dr. Baker is excused. Ms. Davis?
I'm here.
Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, this evening we have two celebrations. Dr. Gorman?
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to ask Mr. John Helmhold to come forward to discuss the Salvation Army-Croc Center partnership.
Dr. Gorman, President Grant, members of the board, it's truly my pleasure to be here to celebrate a partnership between Grand Rapids Public Schools, Brookside Elementary, and a number of other elementary schools across the district, thanks to our friends at the Salvation Army-Croc Center. With me here, of course, is Max Gibbs and John Shaner, and I'm going to turn it over to Max so he can kind of tee it up and tell us a little bit more because he, I think you've served on the board or maybe still do, and helped make a strong partnership even stronger. So, take it away, Max.
Thank you. Madam President, board members, Dr. Gorman, it's always fun to sit in front of you. I get to do this every once in a while, and what a privilege it is. Tonight, we're celebrating a great partnership that started way back when the Croc Center was built on Division Avenue. They took the initiative and went over to Brookside and said, "We have some folks here. We'd like to tutor. We'd like to mentor the kids. We'd like to help them. That's what our role in this community is going to be." So that's how they started, and they've been doing it ever since. About four years ago, we sat down and talked about what else could we do at Brookside and decided that maybe a learn-to-swim program is what we needed for our second graders. Many of you remember back when you were in the Grand Rapids Public Schools in the fourth grade, and I remember because of my children, because I'm not, wasn't around then, but that they had learn-to-swim programs. So, working with the Salvation Army and working with the Grand Rapids Public Schools, that only took one year to put together because they are two of the biggest bureaucracies that the world has ever known. But they're wonderful people, and we knew there would be a result, but it doesn't move quickly. So, we began, and I'm not going to go, John's going to go over all the details, I'm just going to give you a brief summary. So, we were able to start swimming lessons with the kids at Brookside. And I want you to know, if any of you are looking for something to do during your daytime, volunteering, helping those children in second grade put their bathing suits on and then taking them back off and getting dressed, if you think herding cats is exciting, you should try it with seven-year-olds. It is just an amazing thing to have happen, and it's so much fun to watch those kids as they learn to swim. From there, that program has grown, and John's going to talk about that, but we also then had other ideas and looked into the fine arts programs, and we've added that program that John will talk about. And then last year, we added even a more important program, and that was a membership for the students in the Grand Rapids Public Schools to belong to the Croc Center. So, John will talk about the schools we went to there. We started with the seventh graders, and we will continue that program. But none of these can take place without the cooperation of many of those people sitting behind me tonight, the folks that you call the administrators and the cabinet in this school system, because they help, they coordinate, they work with us, and these started under Superintendent Neal and are continuing just as rapidly with Superintendent Gorman, and we really do appreciate that. John, who is the Director of Public Relations, is now going to give you all the big details.
All right. Thank you, Max. President Grant, Dr. Gorman, board members, it's really a privilege to be here this evening to go into a little bit more detail about some of the exciting program partnerships that have been growing between the Croc Center and Grand Rapids Public Schools. So, as Max mentioned, I'm going to try to condense nearly ten years of history down into about four minutes, but we did start working with our school next door, Brookside Elementary, soon after the Croc Center opened. And in addition to the mentoring and tutoring, we also started an after-school program that was funded by initially just a small United Way grant for reading intervention. Since then, it's grown now into what we call RJ's After School Academy. So, in addition to homework help and academic lessons, the third through fifth grade friends from Brookside get opportunities to use the climbing wall at the Croc Center, all of our other recreation areas, the Aquatics Center, et cetera. And then, once a week, we enhance this even further now by inviting parents and siblings to come and enjoy programming that we call Meetup Monday, where adults can take classes in financial literacy and more, while the kids receive free instruction in subjects ranging from archery to building model cars. As Max mentioned, one of the first and most exciting conversations that I've had since I joined the Croc Center in 2015 is that first meeting where we talked about doing the free swim lessons. And while it did take some time to get off the ground, we were able to, in 2017, pilot that program with the two second-grade classes at Brookside Elementary. And now, in the years since, this has been our third spring of providing those swim lessons, and we were able, with the help of our aquatics team and many volunteers, to provide five hours of free water safety and swim instruction to more than 200 second graders from Brookside, Buchanan, Dickinson, and Burton Elementary Schools. So, it's continued to grow, and we are very excited to do that. In addition to that, some of the fifth-grade students at Brookside Elementary this year piloted a program that was funded by a grant from the Salvation Army's territorial headquarters in Chicago. We referred to it as the FAME Program, which stood for Fine Arts, Music, and Expression. It brought the fifth graders over to the Croc Center. We had a partnership with Grand Rapids Ballet School, so they were receiving instruction from Grand Rapids Ballet instructors during the course of their school day, over the course of a couple of months during the winter and into the spring. So, that was a very exciting program, and we hope to continue that for a second year. Now, in the past year, we've started expanding our partnership beyond elementary schools to the middle school level. So, now, seventh graders from Alger Middle, Burton Middle, and Gerald R. Ford Academic Center are eligible to receive free Croc Center memberships just by meeting their attendance requirements. In addition, University Prep Academy will soon begin bringing middle school students to the Croc Center once a week as part of their after-school programming. I'd love to continue to list the ways in which the Croc Center is proud to serve Grand Rapids Public Schools, but at this point, I believe I've communicated how greatly we value not only your schools, but the students in our community on an individual and collective basis. So, finally, we'd like to extend special thanks to Max Gibbs for helping to champion many of these programs with the schools, to the superintendent's office for your continued support, and to each one of the building administrators, teachers, and support staff who have helped to make these programs a reality. We look forward to the continuation of this very strong partnership, not only for this school year, which has just begun, but in the many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do you run when you see Max coming now?
Not at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, next up, we have Dr. Myda Gunnel. She is going to share with our board what we are doing in the Grand Rapids Public Schools to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent Gorman, President Grant, and the board. I am being joined tonight also by Mrs. Malika Brown, Director of Equity and Inclusion. And tonight, we have the pleasure to talk to you about Hispanic Heritage: A Latin Celebration.
So, good evening. September 15th marks the beginning of a 30-day celebration of what's known nationally as a 30-day celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, but as a GRPS family, September 15th marks what we hope will be a year-long and lifelong learning about integration of and connection to Latin culture by our staff and our students. To aid in discussions and lessons on these, we've once again provided a starter pack of resources, web resources for staff via email, and then, in addition to those resources that we hope staff will use through the work of Dr. Gunnel and her E.L. staffs, spearheaded by Mrs. Kaye Smith, GRPS will welcome two very special guests to the district at the end of this month, and Dr. Gunnel will tell you more about those.
The two special guests are, first one is Pablo Cartaya. His book is, the newest book is Marcus Vega Doesn't Speak Spanish, and students, he's going to speak, speaking to students about the importance of being multilingual and bicultural, but he is going to be presenting this book and about his book and also about his culture and many other different cultures, because we know that the Latin culture is not just one culture, it's a lot of cultures with many different roots. So, students are going to get his book, and he is going to be presenting at Buchanan, Burton Middle, Innovation Central, and Dickinson. The second artist is Eric Picardo. He's a local artist. Mr. Picardo is going to be making a form of art form, artwork called Mola, which is originally from Panama, and he is also going to be at Buchanan, different times, obviously different days, Innovation Central, Burton Middle, and Dickinson. The days are September 25th and September 26th. If you'd like more information, I can get that from Julie. We can get that to you from Mrs. Anderson. There is also a parent event the night of September 25th, where parents are going to be invited, and we will have the two artists there. Parents and students are invited. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Where are the two artists and authors going to be at? What school specifically?
I can get that information to you in writing, but they are going to be September 25th and 26th. They're going to be not at the same time and date, but they're going to be in tandem. They're going to be at Buchanan, Burton Middle, Innovation Central, and Dickinson. We'll get that to you in writing.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comment for our board agenda items?
We do not.
Okay. Next, we have the secretary's report.
Well, good evening, everyone. We have two dates. One is the Academic Achievement Committee meeting is scheduled on Thursday, September 5th, a couple of days from now, at 4:30 here in the board chambers of the administration building. We will also be having, the Liaison Committee meeting is scheduled on Wednesday, September 11th, at 11:30 a.m. in the conference room, room 101 downstairs of the administration building. That's all the announcements we have at this point.
Okay. Next, we have committee chair updates. First, the Conference of the Committee Chairs. Last week, these weeks have been moving by quickly, last week or two weeks ago, we had a Conference of the Committee Chairs meeting. The focus of that meeting was the Finance Committee, and Mr. Ross led us through a deep dive into the work that the Finance Committee has been doing, and also just having a greater discussion about how can we, as a board, assist the district as we try to look at our dollars, increase that fund balance, and really stretch our dollars as much as possible, even though we do that already. We did come across some key points. So, we spoke with Mr. Oberus about creating basically a standard, a standard staffing list for buildings that would help us at least look at how much we're spending per building, and then, the building leadership customizes that standard list based on the needs of that building. That was one thing that came up. We know nothing was decided, or we were just looking at how do we track the dollars in each building and better assist the buildings with their budget. So, that was a conversation that came up. That was one of the main things that came out of that discussion with the Finance Committee. No decisions are being made, but that is something that, as we look into the work sessions for the rest of the school year, we will take the discussions that happened in that committee of the chairs' meetings and move them to fuller dives for the work session meetings. So, in October, we will do a review of the Academic Achievement Committee, and in November, we'll do a review of the Finance Committee with the full board. And, Mr. Ross, do you have a report?
I guess I'll just maybe add to that a couple of other topics in regards to Finance Committee and moving forward is, there's efforts to establish some multi-year budgeting. Again, that's something that Mr. Oberus and folks had already began to explore, but obviously the idea behind that is to try to forecast things a little bit better so we aren't as, I guess, reactionary on a year-to-year basis. Of course, that's hard to do with some things at the state level where we don't necessarily know what the funding is going to be, but again, that is a priority, is establish a multi-year budgeting model. Also, maybe facilities, or I use the word "study" very loosely, so don't hold me totally to this, but a facilities operational study, just examining the buildings that we have operating in the district, and really just seeing about aligning our buildings with, frankly, our enrollment. That's not to say that anything is being looked at in particular, but just beginning the conversation to see if there's maybe a better operational model, if you would, as far as the number of buildings we have. And, of course, just being more intentional, aligning our budget with our educational priorities. So, at the end of the day, you know, every district puts your money where your mouth is. What's important to the district is, you know, can be closely identified about where the budgetary priorities go. So, really just taking a closer examination of that. And again, as President Grant pointed out, just some conversations and trying to understand maybe how the Finance Committee can play a role in these efforts and, you know, moving the district, continuing to move the district forward. So, that's pretty much a summation of some of those priorities.
Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Madam President, members of the board, I would like to have Chief of Staff Larry Johnson come forward at this time. He is going to have two reports for you this evening, one of which is an opening of schools report, and then after he does that, he is going to introduce the executive directors, who are then going to introduce new administrators to our school district, and also folks who were administrators or teachers in other roles last year who've moved into different positions. So, with that, Chief of Staff?
Thank you, Dr. Gorman. President Grant, Dr. Gorman, remaining board members, thank you once again, allowing me the opportunity to sit in front of you. I'll be brief with the opening of school. I think we're nine days in, and it has absolutely been a, always a fun and challenging start, and it has been a fun and challenging start, and sometimes a nerve-wracking start, to say the least. What we've tried to do over the last eight weeks, prior to the start of school, is work with our, what we call our facilities and transition team, and just look at all the obstacles and barriers that would stop us from having a great opening. That's working with Ken's team and making sure that our buildings were ready to receive our students and our staff, but more importantly, with all the construction projects that we had and the dust that's being kicked up by construction projects. I wanted to make sure that our buildings had special attention to make sure that they were, were in fact clean and that our kids could pass in them without any problems. And as always, and I don't look at it as a challenge, but I look at it as an opportunity, and that opportunity is to always work with our vendors, and one of those vendors being around transportation, and make sure that we can safely get our kids to school, but not only safely, but in a timely manner, arrivals and departures. So, we're always looking at those opportunities with our provider, and as a result of that, we have extended our hotline to work with, give our parents an opportunity to call when there is a concern around the transportation, the transporting of their child to and from school. And so, we will continue to keep that hotline open as long as necessary as we, as new drivers learn new routes and just some of the various obstacles that we have around not only theme school, but just the day-to-day transporting of a lot of youth in our community. We had our first football game this past Thursday, great turnout with many and various themes behind that. Thank Kurt Johnson to his organization around that, and we pulled that off without a hitch, no problems in the community. Well, we had one neighbor complain about the number of students, but it's always a good thing when neighbors complain about the number of fans and cars that are in the community for an athletic event. And so, we'll continue to respect those neighbors' wishes and work with them to make sure that they also have an enjoyable evening as they experience what goes around Housman Field. So, now, our work turns to the day-to-day activities of running a school as safely as we can, and believe it or not, we are now in the mode of preparing for our severe weather. And so, we will bring you more information on that in the coming days. So, unless you have any questions, I'll move on to the next portion of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to introduce, or reintroduce, some of our executive directors, who will then introduce some of the newly appointed staff and some of those staff members who have been moved in new positions this year. And I would just like, in this order, Matthew Besford, Bridget Chaney, Dr. Carl Nelson, Dr. Myda Gunnel, Rodney Lewis, Laura Lemoore, and Ken Callen-Parents to come up front, and then they will, they will begin to introduce their staff and have them stand in the interest of time, just have them stand where they are and tell you what, who those individuals are and what buildings they are now representing. Guys want to come up?
And in your packets, there are bios of all the individuals, so they get to learn a little more about them.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and members of the board. I have the honor of starting the introductions tonight out of the Besford Cohort Partnership of Elementary Schools. I'll start with Susan Lee, our new IB Coordinator for Sherwood Park Global Studies Academy. And next, we have Proud Principal Michael Thomasma, our new Principal of Stocking Elementary. And next, Tammy Jenkins, Proud Principal of East Leonard. And then, Andrew Semmerson, Proud AP over at North Park Montessori. And last, Dan Morris, Proud AP over at Grand Rapids Montessori.
Good evening, Dr. Gorman, and Madam President, distinguished members of the board. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I could not be more pleased to introduce three people that have taken on new roles this year as principals. Arnaldo Melendez at Dickinson Academy, Jennifer Williams at Congress Elementary, and Melissa Wozniak at Brookside Elementary.
Madam President, Dr. Gorman, members of the Board of Education, it is my honor to introduce to you Bernard Colton, Principal at Alger Middle, Brandon Geiton, Dean of Students at Westwood Middle, Nathaniel Moody, Assistant Principal at Alger Middle, Chad Nielsen, Assistant Principal at Harrison Park, Amarena Nelson, Assistant Principal at Alger Middle, and Dr. Heather Thompson, Principal at Harrison Park.
Dr. Gorman, President Grant, and the board, I am very happy to introduce to you today Julian Ramirez Torres. He is the new Assistant Principal at Southwest Community Campus.
Good evening, Superintendent Gorman, Madam President, Grant, and distinguished board members. I would like to introduce the administrative changes that happened at the high school division. With that, I would like to introduce first, Mr. Jesse Antuma, IB Coordinator at City High Middle. Next, we have Mr. Rodney Brown, Principal at Grand Rapids Learning Center. Next, we have Ms. Stephanie Davis, Mrs. Stephanie Davis-Johnson, Principal Ottawa Hills High Next, we have Ms. Nico Jones, Dean of Students, Ottawa Hills High School. Mr. Troy Wilbon, Principal at Southeast Career Pathways. Mr. Aaron Russey, Principal, Union High School. And then, we have three that are not with us this evening. Mr. Sam Mickens Jr., Dean of Students at Grand Rapids University Preparatory Academy. Innovation Central, we have Mr. Koshik Sarkar, Assistant Principal. And then last, we have Ms. Vanessa Allen, Assistant Principal at Ottawa Hills High School.
Superintendent Gorman, President Grant, distinguished members of the board, I am pleased to introduce to you this evening a longstanding community member to our Grand Rapids Public Schools family, in introducing Laura McLeod. She joins us as a Supervisor for Special Education and Early Intervention Services. She'll be serving 12 of our buildings with students with IEPs and varying disabilities.
Good evening, President Grant, Dr. Gorman, and board members. I think I'm the last one. I want to introduce Kate Blaine, who is a new Operations Coordinator with the Facilities Department, and Brad Bennett, who is a Supervisor of Maintenance, Carpentry, and Painting with the Facilities Department.
I believe that we missed anyone? Okay, great. This will conclude the report tonight, but one of the important things about this particular report is many of the individuals, although some are new to the district, many of the individuals you see here today, they went through the Grand Rapids Public Schools, and we talk about growing your own, and have the opportunity to come back and work for the district and move up through the district. And I think that's very important, that our kids see individuals from the community that they've known and had an opportunity to grow with. And so, although, again, although some are new to the district, and I don't want to shed any light on that, I think it's very important when we have the opportunity to really grow our own within this community and bring our young people back who go away to graduate and put them in front of our kids. And I think if we continue to do that, I really think we're going to see some great things from it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for your service. Thank you for being willing to take on more responsibility, more hours. We know that's what that means, but thank you for being dedicated to our children.
Madam President, members of the board, we have one more report this evening. Mr. John Helmhold, please come forward. John is going to be discussing the Grand Rapids Promised Zone Authority Board of Directors meeting.
Thank you. So, we have finally landed on our first official Promised Zone Authority Board meeting. That is scheduled for September 11th at 2:00 p.m. This is an organizational meeting, so really the emphasis is going to be on electing, doing the oath of office, electing the chair and the officers, and then really doing a high-level overview of the Promised Zone law and what the responsibilities will be of the board, and some of the upcoming decision-making. And then, we'll set the schedule for the remainder of the year, and we'll get this thing going. So, just kind of for, just a quick overview, the main role, the first main action of that board is going to be to develop a Promised Zone implementation plan. And in the state law, it specifies lots of different criteria and things that they have to make decisions on. We have a checklist that we've already prepared for them to review, and then we'll, that'll include everything from the fundraising plan, the sustainability plan, whether they're going to limit it to a two-year associate to start, or is it two-year associate plus that money could follow to a four-year, could be up to four-year. So, there's a whole lot of criteria that they'll go through that'll be part of it. This is a public meeting. It is subject to the Open Meetings Act. It'll be posted, just like your board meetings are.
Do we have any questions or discussion? Thank you, Mr. Helm. Next, we have some action items. First, the purchasing agenda. Do I have any discussion or questions around that? Do I have a motion to approve the purchasing agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Reverend Matthias?
Reverend Matthias, yes.
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Next, we have a motion to certify delegates to participate in the MASB Delegate Assembly on November 8th. Do we have anyone who's particularly burning to be a delegate? Yes, Ms. Lewis.
I had the privilege of doing it for the last two years. It's a...
You'd like to continue?
Yes.
Would anyone else like to battle Ms. Lewis for that position?
I'd like to debate Ms. Lewis for...
Do we need a second? A backup?
I don't think we've... Well, no, we can take more.
We're having a discussion right now. We can take up to four.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Lewis, would you tell us more about what's happened at that delegation, please?
When I come back?
No, no, no. Just try to help me decide if I want to go. That's what I'm getting at.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you want me to do.
Can you give just a bit of a background on what the conference is?
What does it entail?
Oh, okay. Well, it's generally, the conference itself is a whole weekend long of classes and so on, but I don't intend to take any classes. But there will be a meeting of all of the different representatives from all of the different schools, based on the size of the school district, how many representatives you have. And I serve on the Policy Committee, and so we have some new policies that we are introducing at the general meeting. Now, Reverend Mathias has been with me one time and Mr. Flores as well, so we are entitled to take... What did you say? Did you say we could take up to four?
We can take up to four delegates.
So, it's an opportunity to find out what's going on statewide, different issues. We'll be discussing the budget, all the things that we talk about here, we talk about there, and we're on a statewide level.
Thank you. Not to put Mrs. Williams on...
What was it said?
I was going to say that it is kind of a good, you know, kind of immersive, you know, baptismal for spending the weekend with this MASB, so...
Well, I'm not spending the weekend.
I'm encouraging your colleagues to you to consider being a delegate.
Unfortunately, I've taken a new position that is taking quite a bit of training and time away, so that's why I'm not volunteering. I appreciate it, though.
Well, I do like, I love this kind of stuff.
Yes. Are we voting for...
I'm this person for who isn't here tonight.
Ms. Davis?
I'll volunteer to go if we need representation, so...
Well, we could both go.
Yes.
I would just like to make a note, and we'll be talking about this at the board retreat, and so that is a discussion item for this evening. But I would love to see some new people attending events. Ms. Williams, I totally understand, but we are going to start balancing out... We have a small board budget, and I want to disperse that evenly among everyone. So, just a note that we would like to start seeing everyone attend something. So, do we have a motion on the table?
Motion to support Reverend Mathias to attend MASB as delegates.
Do I have support?
Support.
All right. Reverend Mathias?
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis is excused. Dr. Flores?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda grouping?
Support.
Support. Reverend Mathias?
Reverend Mathias, yes. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shadke?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Dr. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Davis is excused.
Dr. Flores? Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
President Grant?
Yes.
Motion carries?
All right. We have one discussion item. It's not on your agenda, so I apologize, but I did want to address an email that went out about scheduling the board retreat for this fall. We've only had a few responses, so while I had you guys in one place, I wanted to get some more responses. We are looking at October 15th, 16th, or 17th for a full-day retreat. Can you guys check your schedules?
I sent my email. Did you get it?
Yes. I believe three people responded, so I just need a few more responses.
Did I? Do you know if we will do? I'm sorry, I'm talking to you in Spanish, like...
I am not positive, but if everyone could just make a quick check right now and let me know. It sounds like so far, the 17th was working best for people.
I have a conflict on the 17th.
Okay. What dates work for you?
15th and 16th work for me. Yep.
15th and 16th.
You responded, Mr. Ross? Thank you.
I can make that work.
Any of those?
Either day.
Okay. Ms. Lewis, you responded. Ms. Williams?
I responded.
Okay. Awesome. Okay, so we will have a response out this week for you all, since we have everyone's responses at this point. All right? Thank you. We have no public comment for non-agenda items. Superintendent's comments?
No comment, Madam President.
Dr. Flores?
No comment.
Dr. Baker?
No comment.
Mr. Ross?
Just the opportunity to thank all these people in one room, that doesn't come often. So, really, just sincerely, deeply, probably can't say thank you enough. Kind of maybe just empty words, but genuinely, your work is often undervalued and seemingly underappreciated, but know at least from the folks up here, plenty of conversations, people recognize how hard you work and how committed you are. So, really, genuinely, thank you, really.
Ms. Shadke?
Well, ditto. That's exactly what I was going to say, but truly and simply, just thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Reverend Mathias?
Yeah, we so appreciate you. You are the faces many of the parents look to, to solve a lot of the issues of our kids. And I have been in some of your offices for my own kids. And so, we so appreciate many times the way you handle volatile parents. I wasn't one, but just the way that you really handle the passion that they have for their children and the way that they want to advocate. And so, we really appreciate that and look forward to hearing a lot of the good things that we're going to see coming out of our schools. Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you again. I appreciate all the work that you do, and I am excited about what this year will bring.
And I am an echo chamber down here. I'm glad you're all here, and I'm glad to get a chance to sort of meet you and welcome you to Grand Rapids Public Schools. And I look forward to visiting your buildings and maybe getting to talk to you and meet you more personally. I also wanted to say that the football game last week was an absolute success. I enjoyed the bands, I enjoyed the kids. You know, many of you know, I spent 37 years with my teenage kids at Kennewah Hills, and it was like old times, having teenagers running around, you know? And I loved it. And it was just, you know, the cheerleaders were great, the bands were great, and the choir that sang the National Anthem was spectacular. But I do have a kid in that choir, so I'm totally prejudiced, but it was a great, it was a great night.
Thank you. It's wonderful to see so many familiar faces. Thank you again. Meeting adjourned.
Yes, sir.